Start with probably Stan, since he wasn't here. And let's try to take two minutes or less
Yeah, I think we'll
to individually describe where we want to go as far as the timeline goes for a vote. And then our ideal location and secondary location for either a refurbishment or a total rebuild. Stan, would you like to take it away?
Sure. The primary location is in the Bay Area. I'd like to get the 5.7 acres from Jackie Brown. And stay in the Bay Area. We need to focus. Continue cleaning the Bay. And I think we will do that by being in the Bay. Once we move out of the Bay, it's going to take a lot of the big, normal traffic out of the Bay that needs to observe the Bay and see what we can do to improve it.
Hey, and how do you feel about the timeline? November, March, next November?
I believe we do like we did last time, even if we're ready in November, we hold off and we could go out for bids. And in November, December, and may even have like Mike Connor, one of our local contractors, look at everything to see if we have everything and we didn't miss anything. So I'm looking at a March town meeting day vote.
Okay, Matt, I want to, I want to chime you in for a second. I want to know what you think about the possibility of bidding contingent on voter approval, same as last time. What would we have to do different than what we're already planning to get to the point where we could bid it out?
This, this is a little bit different because the approach that we're going to do is, is hire the design firm just to get to a schematic design level. And then I would do the estimate and then, you know, you guys approve the budget and the design based on that, and that would go out to bid
Alright, froze.
For November. Approves, the design would be complete 2021.
With that, Matt, you cut out like 90% of the way through, you cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better?
A little bit.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Do I need to start over?
Yeah, but take it from the halfway point in, from your last point.
Okay, so the phase that we're in now, we would hire the designer to get to a schematic design level. And from that information, I will put an estimate together. You guys look at my budget estimate and you guys agree on the budget and the design and the program. And then that would go to the voters on November to decide if they want to proceed with the project or not. If it's, if it's approved, then during the month of December, the design will be completed through, through the winter time. And then it would be bid out spring of 2021 and construction will begin in summer of 2021.
Now, Matt, would it be, off the top of your head, I know we've had about 150 to 200,000 in soft costs before we got to the vote on the garage. And I think we said that we would never do it that way again without having the money already approved by voters like we did for this first 65,000. Would it be at all doable in your mind to work to have the schematics for the design in place for November's vote? And then do maybe pre-development round two? To gain access to another 50 or 100,000 or whatever the budget would need to be to get to the point where we could then shift to where we did the garage in March, but we already had the bids out and had, we just about had contracts in place. Would it be possible to go for pre-development money round two in November? And then have the full design done through the winter months and have a full blown project vote in March? So that we could still construct next year?
Well, you've already been for the pre-development phase now, which is the 65,000. That's already been approved. That takes you through the schematic phase so that we can get a solid cost setup. I think if you, if you go to the voters again, you might have some voting, to be honest, the voters fatigue on the project. The reason we are doing it this way is because this is, you know, this is, this is really kind of some of the ways a lot of the municipalities do it, is that they hire professional estimator. And then what happens is, you basically say, okay, this is the budget, this is the amount that, that, that the the town can spend. And for some reason, if the bidders come out and we hard bid the job and it becomes over budget, then we need to go back and do some value management or additional ways to reduce the cost.
I'd like to get us to the point where we don't have to, I just don't want to have to go back. You know, I don't, I don't want to have to be the project to death after we already have the approval. So when we got to the point where we proposed the garage in March, we had it to the point where we were spending money on permits already. There was, you know, we spent 150,000, not 65,000. What was the difference between what we're doing now and in that process? Where did that extra money go?
Well, that, that completed the design and you went out to bid. So the reason I had, I had suggested doing the pre-development phase, that way you're not shelling out a lot, you're not shelling out $150,000 upfront and then the voters may, you know, turn it down. Then what do you do with the $150,000 that you spent on all the, all the design costs? I'm trying to save you money upfront by saying, well, let's get to the schematic level because you don't really need, you know, a full design in order to get, figure out a confidence level what the budget ought to be at. I feel confident in my estimating ability and knowing the market. You guys are going to bet my numbers out anyway. So that, you know, you're either going to spend $65,000 today or you spend 150,000, $200,000 later on and, and then the voters may turn it down. But I didn't want you guys to have a lot of costs upfront without knowing if the project is going to pass or not.
Well, right, that's why, see, I'd like to get to the point where by the time we propose the full project with the full multimillion dollar budget, that we're to the point where, you know, we, we could stake the thing out and it's shovel ready tomorrow. And I guess, I guess I'm going to open it up because I'm talking too much. Why don't we, why don't we check in with Aaron and Jessica? Aaron, would you like to chime in?
Yeah, so I think that we have an opportunity with just thinking about moving forward. I think, you know, I'll just say, for the last conversation that was happening, I think the, you know, the difference between what Matt's just talking about as far as, and what you're talking about, Brendan, I don't think I'm fully understanding what you're proposing as an alternative. But I think that having things go before the voters in November with the plan as it's in the smart sheet, you know, project makes a lot of sense. Especially, A, to save some upfront costs and then also to capture the attention of the voters in an important or big election year, an election cycle. So I think, and I also recognize the voter fatigue that might happen, that if we put some, if we, we ask multiple steps, you know, we might not get the kind of engagement we want or it might, it could, you know, we might get approval halfway and then like lose it in the second vote. So I, I would say that we should try to plan for a November decision as much as possible. So that, again, because people have been inside and have been getting used to that. You know, maybe we can use technology to engage voters. I think there'll be more interested engagement in a virtual way leading into a presidential election than maybe going into a town hall or a town meeting day vote. So I think there's some momentum right now around that. I think also if we're talking location, I think I would, you know, for my first choice would be to build a new site in the Bay. My second choice would be, that's hard. Because I, you know, reading and thinking about, you know, the suggestion that the current town hall, if we were to rehab it both for, what my understanding was, it's not just the integrity of the building and how long the building would last, but also space needs of the town. I don't think that, as much as I'd like to see us use the town hall in some way, the current town hall, I think that we would be doing the citizens a disservice if we put a lot of eggs in the basket of trying to get that up to code or up to where it needs to be. And I think that we could build something that meets the needs of the town long term if we go elsewhere. So I think that if we were to leave the Bay, I think it would be because the costs were much higher to build them a bay and we would have to consider a different location. I'll just say too, I think, you know, the other meeting we had, we talked about possibly dividing town offices into two locations, having the current town hall and building a second location. I think that does make sense for a firehouse. I don't know if it makes sense for town offices for the public to be able to go and have one stop stopping, as it were, for their services. And also for our staff needs of being able to collaborate and work together, have staff meetings, you know, cross coverage as needed. I just think it could be very difficult for, you know, Carrie and her team to conduct their work in two locations across town. So again, my first choice would be new site in the Bay. Second choice would be, I don't know, I don't really have a good solid second choice, but I think, you know, that's where I'm at.
Okay, perfect. Alright, and Jessica?
Um, yeah, I think with the information we have, my first choice would be the new site in the Bay. The only thing that I think to consider with the possibility of rehabbing the current town hall, I know it's been brought up in the past and I don't know if I know the answer, if anyone's ever talked to that blue building next door as a lot to buy and expand the current town hall on. And then be able to renovate and expand at the same time. But that's kind of opening a whole new can of worms possibly unless somebody has information on that. But that, to me, that's an interesting option as well. But I definitely think we should keep it in the Bay. I'd be okay with either option. And as far as the vote goes, I would like to see it in November, if that's possible with the timeline.
Okay, Jonathan hasn't joined in on the last couple of minutes, has he? Anybody seen him? I'm on my phone, I'm just
I see him.
Jonathan, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, your turn.
Uh, so, you know, Stan touched on a good point about cleaning up the Bay, you know. I think if we do have a building, I think we should have municipal water and sewer going to it somehow, some way. I mean, I don't think we should add any more load to the area down here. That's just my thoughts. I mean, I mean, the brown property is nice and it would probably suit our needs. But what are we going to do with the other building is also the question I have. I mean, I don't know. That's, that's kind of where I stand.
Where are you at with the timeline? March or November?
Uh, I, I would say more March than November myself, but I think, I think it has a better chance. I mean, it's kind of early right now and by the looks of it, we're not going to have meetings anytime soon.
Okay, so Carrie, do you want to touch on Jonathan's point about the gentleman who contacted you talking about a private public partnership for the current town hall?
I can. So I had a developer, developer who's done a few of these projects in the city approach me six months ago and asked about the town hall and frankly, wanted to do more than one project, but was willing to start with town hall. He's used to doing historic preservation grants and taking advantage of the tax breaks, I guess I'll call them. So he would be interested, he said he would be interested and saw a bunch of possibilities for our building. But I said at this point, six months ago anyway, we didn't have a real clear calendar. So I told him I'd get back to him. But he, he was pretty excited about it and he's done some successful places. He's the same guy that did the Stevens House, right? The intersection of Federal Street and Lake. And also to Jessica's point, without getting too much into the weeds, we have contacted the neighbors at town hall, the Vincent's. I'm going to call them again probably tomorrow. I just got their Lister card, their property. They want every bit of what they're assessed for, even though we want the land, which is $207,000. The challenge though is, our town hall is on the historic registry, so you can't really just tear apart one wall, but so I don't know if it would be affordable at $200,000 just for a lot or not, but that's just
So, alright, well, we went around the circle. I'm going to, I'm going to go and then we'll try to come full circle and see if we can find some little gap somewhere. Okay, Aaron, I was talking about doing two votes. One in November for the next phase. I mean, like Matt said, if we went to a vote in November with our schematics and our estimate, it would probably be fine, but we still have to spend some time in the, in the winter fleshing out the final design so we were good, would be ready for a hard bid. And that would cost money, but it would be included in the total package for the new building that the voters would approve in November. I'm saying it might be worth thinking about maybe doing a vote in November for just the cost of that next phase to get ready for a hard, for hard bid. Whatever it is, permits, whatever. And then that, that gives you two opportunities. It gives you an opportunity to approve that money. And then it gives you an opportunity to still build the project out with a March vote. So you're still going to bid like we did. I mean, we went to the bid in, we went to bid through the winter of 2018. We got the, or was it 2019? We got it approved in the, in March and Connor started in mid-May. So it was very doable. I just, politically, I don't know that it's feasible to get this through in November. That's really concerning. This is definitely not the type of project that you can fail or have fail in November and then be back in March with a value engineered version. If it fails, it's going to go on the shelf for a few years, the same as the Department of Public Works project did. When it failed in 2015, it took almost four years to get it to the point where we could bring that back and have it pass. So this is really a one shot for the time being.
I don't really think that's true, Brendan. I'm going to go out
Me either, me neither.
People have been, people talk to me all day on town meeting day and they talk to Anna. They are ready to vote for town hall.
Yes, they are.
The right project, the right project. Finding the right project is going to be a divisive process.
But you didn't preface your previous statement with right project.
I think, I know, I think, I know the voters and they want it in the Bay. And I think if you go out and buy land in the Bay and construct a new building, they're going to go for it. Whether you ask it in two phases, where you're buying the land first, or the next phase where you're building a building, I think they're going to go for it. That's just, that's just my personal opinion.
Brendan, can I add something to your
Absolutely.
Your approach? You're not really gaining anything because if you're still voting in November, regardless if you're asking to go to fund the rest of the funds to design the project, you're technically doing that anyway because you're saying to the voters, except for this time, you'll have an actual price tag available and then you're going to say, this is a price tag which includes bricks and mortar construction costs and all the design it's going to take to finish the drawings up. So you're not going, you're not gaining any step or advantage to that because then if you do, if you do it two steps, you're going to say in November, can we spend, let's say, I'm going to guess, $150,000 for design fees? Then you're going to go back in March and you're going to say, can we spend, let's say, three and a half million dollars to build the project? I mean, you know.
Do we have any budget, any, any money, any money in your budget, Matt, to do onsite testing? To do some maybe bore tests or soil tests for contaminants on any property that we might want to look at?
Yeah, I budgeted like $10,000 for geotech.
Well, that should cover it then.
Yeah.
So why don't we, I'm still up in the air on the timeline as far as what's better between November and March. I'm leaning at March because I don't see a lot of our voters being able to tune in via technology in the next six months.
I think we sell it like we sell the pool.
But it's doable, but I mean, we were able to meet, we were able to have 60 person meetings in town hall over the pool.
I don't think we're going to have that in March either. We're not going to have that probably in February either.
Maybe we all get out on the streets and hold signs, you know? We gotta, every day is a new challenge.
I think you'll get a better turnout in November, you know, and then what happens with March is the people who are against it, those are the ones who are going to show up. You have less coverage in March than you will in November.
And I think we can get creative about how we outreach to folks as well. I mean, maybe we can ask, we can get time with Northwest Access TV to do, like being on the channel live and have it be a call in and answer questions. Maybe we have
That's not my house.
Not mine.
We're good.
Um, you know, we could have, I don't know, we could invite, like, you see on the news, sometimes they invite a panel of people. So we could have live questions from people who have voiced concerns or maybe have called into these Zoom calls or have written to Carrie to say they've got a question. We could invite them to participate live so that they could be heard live. And then maybe we could also have people calling in and have, you know, Richard and somebody else moderate a conversation about it. You know, I think that there's, you know, Jessica was talking about how the high school is using technology to advance conversations. So I mean, for especially, I don't have kids in the school system, but it sounds like parents that do have kids in the school system are experiencing technology in different ways to communicate. So I think that part, as far as meeting in person, traditionally that's how we do it. But I think for the next year, we're going to have to do things very differently, I think.
Exactly. And I, I see where Corey Parent is doing an innovative thing as far as advertising now for nonprofits. So, I mean, we all face new challenges.
Well, that's, that's let's, uh, let's talk about it then. Why don't we do a little bit of a roll call? Not a binding vote, but let's go one, two, three, four, five and say, March or November? I want to, if I'm totally in the minority, I will quit talking about it right now, but I just, I want to know. So let's start. Stan, where are you? March or November?
I'm still, still March.
March?
Yes, but that's all we're talking about right now is March or November. Did I?
November, you said November.
March. But did I hear we're going to stay at the Bay? Is that where?
Yes, you did. I think the consensus is, and I agree with it, is to stay in the Bay Area. And the first opportu, the first choice is to build somewhere else that's not the current building. And Jackie Brown's property seems to be the one to explore first.
Yes.
So March or November, you're on March. Jessica, Aaron, both November?
Yeah, I'll stay with November mostly because I don't think the public outreach is going to change in that timeframe. And Matt's point about the voters who come out to vote things down will come in March, whereas November will have such a big pool of voters. I think it'll be more representative of the community.
And I'll just add, I, you know, I've not opposed to having a March vote, but I think it's going to depend on the timeline of the project. If something's waylays us and we need more time, let's go, let's go in March. But I think aim for November, have March as a, as a backup if needed.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not, you know, I can go either way, really.
Okay, fair enough. Jonathan?
Uh, I like March myself.
Fair enough. Now, I go back and forth on it, to be honest with you. I'm kind of in the same boat as Jessica and Aaron when it comes to shoot to have everything ready in November. I think we should do that regardless, shoot to have everything ready that we can in November. And then we should again, talk as a group and decide whether or not we want to put it on the ballot. We should push for November, do everything as fast as possible. And then if we just don't think the public outreach opportunities are there, commit to March then. But right now, leave March as an open opportunity. The window's open. And then we'll try to get everything done for November. And if a quorum of the group decides to go with November, great, we're ready for it. And if not, we'll go to March. Does that sound fair to everybody?
I think it's fair. Brendan, I also think that that communicates to the voters that we're trying to move this project along as fast as, not fast as possible, but as responsibly as possible and that we're receptive and responsive to their requests after the last election to get moving on it. And I think if we can come back to them and say, look, we tried for November. This is why we're going to wait till March. I think that'll be a much more receptive than we're just going to wait till March. That's my thought.
Fair. Yep. So why don't we, why don't we do that? And if we give any interviews on the subject, which may be a priority of mine in the next few days, just to start getting it out in the public eye. We're shooting for November, but if we don't feel that the public outreach opportunities were there and the public doesn't, we don't feel that we've done enough to engage them, we will look at March, no later than March. I think the thing is no later than March, preferably November, but we'll check the political climate and see which way the wind's blowing and then go from there, maybe September, late September. Or whenever, we'd have to add it as an article. Okay, so I think we accomplished everything we wanted to. We want to stay in the Bay Area with a new property. The only one that seems to be researchable at this point is the Jackie Brown property. So we've got to talk again within the next week or two about how we want to go about that. We have two options. We can agree in a letter of intent with Mrs. Brown about the terms that we want to exercise, but not work out a price. So we would need Matt to sit down with Carrie and then recommend a set of terms for us. You know, give us the opportunity to soil test. We'd have to be able to amend the wastewater permit to reflect more commercial use than a residential use. There's all types of little caveats. So we'll have to put that together and get it on paper. And then whether we do it through a letter of intent or a purchase and sales contract with a bunch of contingencies and an addendum, that's totally, I could go either way. I prefer not to involve our attorneys. You do not need an attorney for a purchase and sales or a simple LOI. That's a waste of money. But again, if the, if the group decides otherwise, that's fine.
I think we should involve our attorneys.
We have a meeting on June 1st. I don't think we need to get into the details of how Matt and I should get this done right now. I mean, we have a meeting next week.
Agreed, agreed.
Well, that's it. I mean, I'm trying to figure out if the group wants you to approach Mrs. Brown now or wait.
Alright.
And under what, I mean, you're going to need information about which direction we want to head if the consensus is to approach her sooner rather than later. So I'm trying to get to
Yeah, I would also like to look at, and I'll pretty look at the property, make sure it's a good fit for you guys.
Definitely. So why don't we leave it this way? Between now and June 1st, Matt, if you have any time to review the information that Carrie has on Mrs. Brown's property, if you would do that, that'd be great. And if you could come to us with a recommendation on how to proceed, either identify, you know, problems that make the project unfeasible, if there are any that are readily apparent to you. Or tell us, you know, purchase and sales with an attorney or a letter of intent. And then I recommend the following conditions. If June 1st doesn't leave you enough time, then let's, you know, try to throw a date at the wall that works for you and try to do that sometime tomorrow.
No, I can make that work. Can you tell me again who the working committee members are? I don't think we finalized that last time.
So it's you, Carrie, Anna. Then we have Jonathan, Stanley, and I don't, did I leave anybody else? Okay, so I think we should have one more. We should discuss how to move forward with Jackie Brown's land as a group on the first. If you can make that timeline work, Matt. And then from there, we should delegate some tasks to the subcommittee to be able to get working on. I have a feeling until we have a contractor and LOI in place with Mrs. Brown, there's not going to be much that we can do beyond negotiate our, our terms. But yeah, no, I think that's fine. So I guess the only term that we can talk about now is that the purchase of the property will obviously be contingent on a vote. So anybody that talks to Mrs. Brown should make it clear that we still haven't selected November or March. And the vote could be as late as March, but no later than.
So it should be really clear, Brendan, that Jackie's on this call with us.
Oh, Mrs. Brown, are you there?
Yeah.
It's an open meeting and it's being recorded and so
Well, that's good. I mean, that's fine.
So I just, everyone, everyone with a I just, everyone with access to the screen knows that, but I know you told me you didn't and I'm sorry I didn't tell you that.
Yeah, I'm listening to it.
Okay, so that's great, that's fantastic. So the reason I thought that felt that we didn't need a lawyer is because your reputation as a reasonable business woman precedes you and I think that we can work on it together.
Oh, okay, well, that's very nice of you to say, thank you.
So why don't we, why don't we leave it at that? Does anybody have anything else ahead?
Yeah, we're about one week behind, so my goal right now is to get the RFP out by this Friday. And so I will work with Carrie to get that through and then be posted on the town's website. And then the design team will have about two and a half weeks to respond, respond back to us, okay?
Sounds great. Does anybody else have anything, Jessica, Aaron, Jonathan, Stan?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so we got a clear direction and, sorry about that again, Mrs. Brown. Sorry about that again, Mrs. Brown.
Yep, not a problem, I'm happy to hear this moving forward.
Not a problem, I'm happy to hear this moving forward.
Perfect, okay, so with that, motion to adjourn, anyone? So with that, motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Again.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Again.
We get a playback on that one, play-by-play, all right, all in favor. Playback on that one, play-by-play, all right, all in favor.
Bye.
Well, I heard eight ayes, so that means somewhere along the line it probably carries. So that means somewhere along the line it probably carries, so. With that said, all right, have a good night, everybody.